I guess we can now freely endorse Donald Trump then because of his KKK thing, right?
I tell you, yeah, he's on his way.
My cousin was a reporter at The Times-Picayune for many years and he wrote the unauthorized biography of David Duke. Yeah, that dude was... He's a bad guy.
Yeah.
He was a Grand Dragon.
And it's been like that for a long time.
He tried to make the Klan look respectable.
Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so we can begin our work for today. I want to acknowledge members of today's on-time caucus, Mr. Blumentfeo, Buscaino, Anglender Martinez. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Sergeants, call the members. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers. Mr. Rue has arrived. Members, if you're... Mr. Bonin has arrived. Members, if you're in your offices, report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Mr. O'Farrell has arrived. Mr. Fuentes has arrived. Good morning, good morning. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum again today. It's Tuesday, March 1st. Please call the roll.
Blumentfil, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Anglender, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Coetz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rue moves, Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves, Bonin seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Let's rise. We'll be led today by Mr. Mike Bonin.
Everybody, please place your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Madam Clerk, why don't we begin by going through today's agenda?
Mr. President, their request to continue items 17 and 25 to March 2nd. Further, their request to continue items 1H, Q, and AB for 30 days to March 29th, and a request to continue 10 and 40 to March 15th.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed: 1D, K, P, T, X, Z, and AA as the liens have been paid in full, and 1C and M as the properties have been determined to be owner-occupied and ineligible for lien processing. Additionally, the department recommends that the lien amount on 1G be reduced to $2,269.54.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. That brings us where?
Items 1 through 4 are items noted for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Let's hold those items and continue.
Items 5 through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, specials. Mr... any specials? Let's prepare then to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Mr...
Are we there?
We'll hold 20 for Mr. Buscaino. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, on item 5, those ordinances will be held over to March 15th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, if we get 12, please remind me and we'll just take care of them right now. So let's move on to the next set of items.
Items 21 through 34 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 24, 26, 27, 32.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 35 through 37 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Uh, yes. And let's move on.
On the supplemental agenda, items 38 and 39 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee report for item 38 has been submitted and circulated for council consideration, and item 39 should be held at this point.
All right, well, let's vote on the remaining item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's continue.
On the supplemental agenda, items 40 to 45 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 40, 41, and 43.
Okay, let's vote on the items that don't have cards. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. That brings us where?
Mr. President, it takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
All right, let's start. We'll do an item, maybe two. Let's go to item 43, Mr. Walsh. Item 43.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Item 43, this amends a contract with the California Institute of Arts for another $169,000. I say to everyone out there to take a good look at the state of the sidewalk in front of your house and realize this $149,000 is going to a friend of Mitch O'Farrell who's carrying $149,000 for, I think it's ballet dancing. So ballet dancing is much more important to the city, Institute of the Arts ballet dancing, than to clean this city up, to get rid of the gangs, and to fix the sidewalks. That's what we're dealing with in this city. $169,000 for arts development trust fund and for making movies matter. Movies matter because the academy is racist. This $149,000 goes to institute more racism.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Mr. Rue, would you like, I may do one before. Why don't you get ready, but I'm gonna do item 24. So if I could get item 24, Donna Pierman and Monica Mia, please come forward. Item 24. Yes?
Good morning, council members. This item is for an affordable housing development, 125 apartments with 63 apartments for the homeless and the chronic homeless. I wanted to thank you so very much for your support for our homeless residents in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pierman?
Another wasteful project for a bunch of home, affordable housing for the homeless who was probably there for a very short period of time. My time is not working here, so I don't know how much timing I'm having here. So, okay, good. So, yeah, we want is real opportunity, ones where people can actually have housing that will stay there. But what they do is they get these homeless people over there, and they're only gonna stay there for a short period of time, because after a while, they won't be able to afford to be able to live in these houses, and then they move on, and then they get new homeless people who also will then move on. And we don't, this is not an area where these people will actually get an opportunity. So, when in the meantime, everyone else is paying for temporary housing for the homeless. So, man, this is a bad idea. So, let's not go for this huge metrosity that's only gonna help people for a very short temporary time. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do have 12. Mr. O'Farrell, forthwith on that item. We do have 12. Why don't we vote on reconsideration for, is that item 5? So, on item 5. Oh, and Mr. Buscaino, what was the other item?
44.
So we'll vote on reconsideration for 44 as well. So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now on item 5, we'll vote on the actual item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Rue, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, City Council.
Forthwith on 5.
And good morning, City Council colleagues. It's that time of the year again. Time for the March of Dimes. I remember when I was in elementary school, getting those little envelopes, going home, trying to look for any change around the couch or whatnot to bring it back to my teacher for that little sticker. But you know, the March of Dimes has become a lot more sophisticated, but their mission has still remained the same, and it's a mission of service. And the United States has one of the highest premature birth rates of any high resource county, country. Premature birth is the leading cause of death for newborns in the United States. The leading cause of death among children of five around the world. The March of Dimes works on a national level, but its mission is a very local one. In one year in Los Angeles County, 125,221 babies are born. 11,688 are born prematurely. A little less than 10% of the babies in LA County are born preterm compared to the California rate of 8.8. 3,800 babies are born with a birth defect. 570 babies die before their first birthday. These numbers are too high. The March of Dimes is working to reduce them. They help through community outreach, advocacy, research, and education. Babies who survive an early birth may have lifelong health problems such as cerebral palsy, vision and hearing loss, and learning disabilities. As a healthcare advocate and chair of the Health, Mental Health, and Education Committee, I believe that it's important that we invest in programs like these to provide a brighter future for all our children in Los Angeles. We are proud that the City of LA is committed to healthy babies, so let's have a great march for babies. And with that, I'd like to introduce Allison Sprifkin, Development Director in the Greater Los Angeles Division of the March of Dimes.
Allison, please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rue, and thank you to the entire council for having us here today. I just want to say a huge thanks to the City of Los Angeles, who has been a very, very longstanding partner of the March of Dimes. City employees have raised millions of dollars over a decades-long relationship, and they will continue to do that this year, and for that, we are very grateful. I am myself what we call a mission mom, which means that I had a premature baby who was born 15 weeks early back in 2007. He was one of the statistics that Councilmember Rue just referred to. And I'm happy to say that today he is a happy, healthy, thriving eight-and-a-half-year-old with no residual effects of his prematurity, and that is largely due to the efforts of people like the employees of the City of Los Angeles. So on behalf of March of Dimes, both professionally and personally, I thank you for your hard work and for the dedication of your employees. And I'd also like to say a thank you to Chief Jamie Moore with the LA Fire Department, who for the second year in a row has agreed to lead the campaign, and we are extremely grateful for Chief Moore and for the Los Angeles Fire Department for their commitment to healthy babies. Thank you.
Now, thank you.
And I'd like to introduce and bring up Battalion Chief Jamie Moore, who is, the LA Fire Department has for its second year, as Allison said, have taken the lead in the City of LA for the March of Dimes.
Welcome, Chief.
Good morning, council members. I'm gonna make this short and sweet. The Los Angeles Fire Department has once again chosen to be the lead agency for this worthy cause, and we want to remind everyone, you don't have to have a sick child, have a sick baby, or be premature to be affected by the March of Dimes. We were all there. We were all infants. It's a fight for healthy babies, and your Los Angeles firefighters are committed to fighting for healthy babies. So please join in this campaign. You're gonna have members from your different departments contacting you. The walk is April 30th, and we encourage you all to participate and support those who will be walking, and please join us on that special day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I'll make sure that my office sends out all the information for the March of Dimes to all the council offices. And thank you to the March of Dimes for advocating for all our children, and on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this proclamation to Allison. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and. Okay, let's go to item 26. I believe we have Ms. Pierman and Mr. Spindler. Come on now, Ms. Pierman.
26, oh, yeah, okay. This shows another senseless murder, the shooting death of a Deverick Mathis, which shows why we have to have our Second Amendment rights, which shows why the Republicans are right, our right to bear arms is the most important one, because there's people out there that will want to murder people. And if they thought that people had the right to carry, if they were carrying, these people would not be senselessly murdered. We have to find a way. We have to protect ourselves, because the police are not there all the time to protect us, so we have to protect ourselves. And I know it's one of these another reward motions, of course, snitches get stitches, so you're not gonna be able to get anything. You're wasting your time. In the meantime, we can't protect ourselves, so write on number two, write on the Republican Party, and let's get rid of these reward motions. They don't work. Thank you.
Okay.
Stitches get snitches, bitches of the LAPD. Vote no on this reward. It takes too fucking long to get the money for these rewards. Up on the 10th floor today, it took five fucking years to get $75,000. How long is it gonna take to get $50,000? The only reason you got the $75,000 is because Mitchell Englander's running for supervisor, or the 75 wouldn't have been paid.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject.
$75,000 is offered by whom? By gangsters, called police department officials. You have gangsters offering $50,000 to apprehend fellow gangsters. What the fuck kind of insanity is this? We don't need this bullshit. No on this item. Why? Fuck the police!
Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Sadio, are you ready with your presentation? The floor is Mr. Sadio's.
Mr. President, and I see a lot of smiling faces as we are here today to acknowledge Tom Drissler's retirement from the City of Los Angeles. Tom has a, yes, distinguished career with the airports and the Department of Transportation. He's an Angelino, graduate, 1970 Daniel Murphy High School, and a degree in sociology. That's why we have an affinity. He and I are sociologists by training, which gives us the art of observation, and a master's of administration from the University of Southern California. We don't hold that against him. Tom joined the city family in 1986, where he worked on the land site operations bureau for the Department of Airports at LAX, and where he was assigned the coordinating and regulating of operations of taxicabs and charter, limos, and buses. He was instrumental in establishing the LA Police Ground Transportation Enforcement Unit, and as you recall, during that time period, there were a lot of bandit taxicabs, and he was very involved in that. Tom prepared the specifications and administered the contract for the first automatic vehicle ID system in 1989 at LAX, and earned a recognition of appreciation at the Third Annual Awards of the Excellence of Productivity Commission and Productivity Information Network of the City of Los Angeles in 1991. In 91, he became the first Department of Airports employee in many years to earn the prestigious accreditation AAE from the American Association of Airport Executives. In 99, he was promoted to become the first taxicab administrator for the City of Los Angeles Department of Transportation, where he provided executive support for the Board of Taxicab Commissioners. You may recall, that's when we wrote legislation in Sacramento to collaborate with the city. And Tom was, has very ably represented the city for many years as a member and director of the International Association of Transportation Regulators, including the last two years as Chair of the IATR Board of Directors. Colleagues, joining me in thanking Tom Drissler for his 30 years of service to the City of Los Angeles. 30 years of service to the City of Los Angeles is very significant and deserves our acknowledgement. He is here with family and friends. Tom, please share a brief synopsis of that career of yours in 30 years.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio. It's been very generous of you to sponsor this, and I want to express my appreciation to your staff, their dedication, their professionalism. And, you know, over the years, I've interacted with council members and staff over the years. I've always been impressed with the dedication and professionalism of council members and all the staff members that are constantly extremely busy. It was, it really made it joyful working for them, even on contentious issues. It's been a good run. I really enjoyed my time working for the City of Los Angeles and serving the people in the city. You know, I've dealt with a fair share of controversies. It's nice now that I've been able to step away and have some of those burdens off of my mind. I just, I want to thank everybody for this recognition. This is really nice. This is a great way to go out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, let's go to item 1. Mr. Walsh, Ms. McAllister, and Mr. Spindler on item 1. Please come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential.
Again, when you do a good job, I am the first to congratulate all 15 of you and the mayor. And on these issues, these landlord tenant issues, you are doing a very good job. I'm not here to say the same thing all about that, folks! I'm not that kind of old white guy. I'm saying that you've done an excellent job, and when I had any problems with my landlord, the city came in and straightened everything out. Thank you very much. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McAllister.
Good morning, Mr. President. Now, I have a solution here. As you know, I'm very concerned about people being on the street. And I'm seeing men dressed in suits, just like you, carrying three or four suitcases. So you're susceptible to being homeless, too. Now, we have a program that you're funding, and you're not using it the way you should be using it. It's called the Handy Worker Program. And I see right here that you've got $2,800,800 sitting in there that was just funded. Now, this Handy Worker Program allows a maximum of $5,000...
Ms. McAllister, get on the agenda. We're on item 1.
This is item 1. What are you doing?
No, the Handy Worker Program...
The Handy Worker Program helps people get their homes fixed up.
No, but still, just stay...
Don't you cut me off. This is very important.
No, no, no. Ms., go ahead, but you have to, you have to stay on the item. You have to stay on the item.
You're off the item. Thank you very much. Mr. Spindler, come forward. No, you're disrupting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting. Please, Ms. McAllister, sergeants, remove Ms. McAllister. No, I've already warned you three times. Mr. Spindler, there's another warning. Remove her from the council chambers. She is continuing to disrupt. Mr. Spindler, come forward. Item 1. Please stay on the subject.
What is the meaning of this? So, there we go. We're continuing the fight in CD 9. 1A is in CD 9. B, C, and we need those to be removed by, and item 1AD by Corin Price. And then we need CD 8S and U removed by Marquezey. Because CD 8 and 9 are doing business differently. I looked on the website. Come, if you have liens in CD 8 and 9, they will be forgiven. And finally, in N and O are in David Rue's district, so please forgive the liens in CD 4. Yes, David Rue, yes, David Rue!
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's move to item 2. Mr. Walsh, item 2. Mr. Spindler as well on item 2.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number 2, this relative, what this is, the vacation. In other words, they're getting rid of the northerly side of Abbott Kinney, 100, 200 feet, because of, the reason, if you can see here, is it's gang-infested. They can't control Venice. Venice is run by the gangs. So what LA is doing now is retreating and giving more and more land to the gangs. And if you go to, if you go to Venice and you get shot, don't expect the cops to do anything because they're afraid. See what it says here. The northerly side of Abbott Kinney, little by little, the gangs take over the city, and all they have to do to keep the city keep taking over is give you campaign contributions, which they do.
Mr. Spindler.
Yes, this is an item requiring me to wear a hood. Some do. So we're talking about the destruction of Abbott Kinney Boulevard. Abbott Kinney is now a gang-infested zone. If you live on Abbott Kinney or near the ocean by Abbott Kinney, evacuate immediately. Think of it as a porter ranch with gangs. Get out of that place. Abbott Kinney is the most dangerous neighborhood ever made. And why is it so dangerous? Because of Bonin, that's why. $47,080 of payoff money. They're going to see if it works. Will the gangs take it? Why do I have to wear a hood? Because $47,080 is not enough to ensure anonymity? So all of you wealthy, white Anglo-Saxon scumbag cocksuckers with those houses, move away from Abbott Kinney now!
Let us vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's move to 27. Ms. Peirman, item 27, you and Mr. Spindler.
Again, we have another one I was talking about, responsible shooting death of Akomasa Baraka Jefferson and an injury of James Freeman. Again, that shows again that we got to have the right to be able to protect ourselves. So the Second Amendment right is the very first one, the most important right, because the police are not going to be out there to protect us. In fact, I think we should have the right to carry. And it shows over here that, again, another reward motion for somebody who's not going to be able to do this. You're not going to be able to find anybody who's going to come up to want to get shot for this reward motion, because they'll never get the reward motion. And as I said, and the fact that we got to be able to bring out the Second Amendment rights a lot bigger and better than it ever was, because there's, the police can't protect us. That's as simple as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
So we have $75,000 for a death and an injury. That's only $37.5 for each Negro on this item. It should be 75,000 times two. Why is a black man half a man?
Wait, 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 hold this time. Mr. Spindler, Mr., hold, hold. Mr. Spindler, Mr. Spindler, just hold. I received, you guys cannot holler into the mic. It is adversely affecting the people that do the translation. So please speak with a level tone without hollering into the microphone. Now, start this time. Continue.
It's not my fault you use broken, mismanufactured equipment.
No, just stay on the item.
And I am. I'm trying to speak on item 27, and why it's not $150,000? Because it's two people. Why is it that a reward has to be aggregated? Because a black man is not counted as a single human. I don't understand. $75,000 means the life of a Negro is only worth $37.5. I think that is total fucking bullshit. Vote no on this item unless it's doubled, because why? Fuck the police!
All right, let's, Mr. Rue, did you want to speak on this subject?
No, not on this subject.
I'll get you the next one. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That's approved. So, Mr. Rue, it's my understanding you want item 40 reconsidered? So why don't we vote on reconsideration of item 40? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And it's my understanding you have an amendment.
I have a small technical amendment to change the streets from 4th Street between McCadden and Las Palmas to 4th Street between McCadden and Highland Avenue.
Thank you, sir. Now, let's vote on that.
Do you have someone on who held it, too? A speaker, no? No? Okay.
No? Let's... Is there a card on item? Did somebody fill out a card on item 40? Are you in the audience? If that was you, Mr. Spindler, item 40, come on.
Why am I talking about this? Why? Because it's in CD 4. Because CD 4 has been replaced by a former scumbag in favor of a real-life...
Hold the time again. Mr. Spindler, you are not going to yell and scream into the microphone. I have received complaints from the people that do our translation. I will not allow you or anyone else to do that. So you can speak, but in a normal tone, and stay on the subject.
Yes, but, I mean, it's a, it's a PA system.
No, no, you're off the subject. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. You don't want to cooperate. Thank you. Your time is up. All right, let's prepare. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's, you're continuing to disrupt. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
You're continuing to disrupt, Mr. Spindler. Next time, I have you removed. All right, let's go to the next item. Item 32. Item 32 is you, Mr. Spindler. Come on back. Let's see. Oh, no, Mr. Spindler, you're out of time. Ms. Peirman, item 32. Sit down, Mr. Spindler. You're out of town. Donna Peirman, please come forward. You're out of time. Yes, ma'am?
Again, we got, seems to be overloaded with all these shooting deaths of different people, so I guess they want to see that everybody who's, who got shot, that it looks like the city council cares about the people, and that's why they come up with these rewards. But as I said, it just shows all the time, each and every time, that people should be able to protect themselves. It shows it over and over and over, that police are not, they can't protect us all because they can't be everywhere at once. And these people would think about not shooting these people if we had the right to carry. So our Second Amendment rights is the most, one of the most important rights, because, you know, next night, there will be shooting, next time, there will be terrorists coming on in. So, so I said, all right, with the Second Amendment rights, and okay with the Republican Party. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, we're going to move to item 41. Mr. Walsh, item 41. John Walsh, item 41, followed by Ms. Peirman on item 41.
Number 41. This is a reward offer for the unsolved murder of Harvey Medine Coronado. Is he a member of the Medine cartel? I doubt it. But in any case, these rewards are a sick joke on the survivors, on the families, that this reward is $50,000. You can make it $50 million. Snitches get stitches. It is a death warrant for anyone to go to the police, because the police are infested by gangs. People are being paid off, the cops are being paid off with the gang. They'll finger you, and then you will be killed as a testament, as a warning, not to snitch on the gangs, and they deserve to be snitched on. Tell me anybody who's ever been caught for your rewards.
Okay, Ms. Peirman? Donna Peirman?
Yeah.
You have one minute left, Ms. Peirman?
I think I'll pass this one.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, we'll move to item 3. Mr. Walsh on item 3. John Walsh, item 3. And you're down to one minute, I'm told.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. This, again, is alcoholic beverages. You never deny alcoholic beverages. We have, people drink, they drive, and they kill. And if the person, if someone is murdered east of La Brea, that means something. That means nothing. If it's west of La Brea, that's where we wealthy whites live. And I'm telling you now, every time you add, for necessity, liquor license for necessity, you fucking scumbags have the blood of blacks and Hispanics on your goddamn motherfucking hands. You vomitous piece of shit, Mr. Rue!
Let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's move to item 4. One minute on these, since we're not hearing this item. Mr. City Attorney, we're going to go one minute on item 4, correct?
Actually, since it'll be heard again tomorrow, one minute each.
Okay. Mr. Rich, Richard Ottestrom, I saw him earlier, yeah, I see him coming up. Mr. Walsh is out of time. Mr. Spindler's out of time. Go ahead, Rich.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Rick Ottestrom, Director of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and I'm a small business owner. Agla is against the steep raise in the water rates. I think that's obvious. Owners with units under rent control can only raise their income 3% while utility costs go far beyond the 3%, particularly in this. Also, minimum wage has gone up 50%. Small owners with rent-controlled units will reach a point where they cannot stay in business if their maintenance costs go up faster than their income. So think about that when we're picking out the 3% or 4%. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Benjamin Benimoff, followed by Donna Peirman. Ms. Peirman. And Benjamin. No Benjamin? Going once, twice, thrice. Ms. Peirman?
Okay, we had worry about this, this water increase, and I can't believe Norrie voted for this in the past. So we can't really afford the water and power rates as it is, and think about all these people that won't be able to, these water rates are going to kill them. I mean, how are we going to feed our sheep if we raise the water rate?
You're cracking yourself up.
So, anyway, off the sheet. That, we can't, you already waste a lot of money on watering things, big, great, big, huge lawns, and nothing gets done by making sure that we don't overuse the water and all these affordable housings that you have with these huge buildings in Westfield, and nobody cares about how much money they use, and if that money hadn't been wasted.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to our next item. Yes, Mr. City Attorney, you wanted to...
Just for clarification, and the hearing is continued to tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Kukorian. I want to defer to you. You can walk us through the... You can walk us through the closed session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On item numbers thirty-five and thirty-six, budget and finance considered the recommendations of the city attorney. Those are settlements of lawsuits which can be approved in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item number thirty-seven is going to be continued at the request of the city attorney until March sixteenth, if that meets with your approval.
Okay, so item thirty-seven, we will continue until the sixteenth of March. And I want to defer to the clerk. We will take up thirty-five and thirty-six at this point, if you could read those items.
On item thirty-five, in the case entitled Caracool Lane versus the City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in settlement. And on item thirty-six, in the case entitled Tyler St. Mark versus the City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend two hundred thousand dollars in settlement.
Okay, let us prepare. Mr. Krikorian, we're going to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
They are approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if I may, I'd also like to ask that items fifteen and thirty-eight be sent forth with, please.
Without objection.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Harris Dawson, you want to take up item forty-four at this point? I do have some cards. Would you like for me to do the cards first? You want to do a minute on each card?
You can do the cards first. Minute is fine.
Okay, Ms. Watson, Cheryl Watson, Gilbert Johnson, Lorraine Cantley, please come forward. Where are you? Where are my speakers? Okay, do we have a ten? Cornigay, Darren Moore, Doran Moore? Please come forward and identify yourself. Yes?
Good morning, I'm Cheryl Watson. And I'm here to urge the council to support Marquise Harris Dawson and Joe Buscano's resolution to support Proposition forty-seven. Proposition forty-seven is necessary, but the prisoners that are going to be released from prison need adequate services, need adequate resources in order to maintain their selves in the free world. And I'm also advocating for our youth who are not in safe environments in these communities. And we need to invest that money so we can maintain safety for our children, safety for the community, and adequate education so that they can be successful citizens in this city. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please, please come forward and identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Gilbert Johnson from Community Coalition. And we urge the City Council to also support Marquise Harris Dawson and Joe Buscano's resolution to get Prop forty-seven fully funded. Because when voters passed Prop forty-seven back in twenty fourteen, the will of the voters showed that we want our hard-earned tax dollars redirected out of prisons and into our communities for the supports, the interventions, and the resources that our people need in our communities. We have thousands of folks that are coming home from prison and for them to successfully reintegrate back into society and to prevent our youth from entering the incarceration or prison system in the first place. Our communities need that investment and that support. And we thank you, board, for fully, for fighting and supporting our movement to fully fund Prop forty-seven.
Thank you, sir. Next, next speaker, and if you please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Lorraine, and I'm here to support Prop forty-seven as well. I work with L.A. Voice, and I am a member of New Life in Christ Cogic Church. I am speaking about the hope, the hope that needs to be restored in our communities for our children. A lot of these children, they don't even see a future. And they see that their parents may have to deal with these different circumstances due to them being imprisoned. And these children don't see themselves being able to reach the age twenty-one. So I'm asking that you guys will support the Prop forty-seven so we can restore hope in these communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning, council. My name is Darren Moore. I'm from First to Serve. First, I want to actually thank Harris and Dawson for introducing this resolution. I oversee the winter shelter program. And as of today, you know, we really aren't addressing the homeless situation. But what we do provide for the homeless, for the winter shelter when they come in, we do have case managers that provide them with adequate wraparound services. Dental, housing, you have the UCLA Medical Center that comes in. So, and they get free flu shots, they get free TB testing. So with that, you know, I think it's important that we keep the wraparound services. And I think Prop forty-seven with the funding can help us continue to provide the homeless with those wraparound services. Thank you.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Good morning, council. My name is Tim Cornigay, and I'm with L.A. Voice. And I would also like to thank Councilman Dawson, Councilman Dawson for his support of Prop forty-seven and indicate that we would really like to see the, these savings directed towards community-based organizations and faith-based organizations. Because I happen to be one of the affected individuals in that I'm formerly incarcerated. And the services that are provided and the belief in redemption and the benefits of social justice really need this funding to help individuals like myself and others returning home from the mistakes that we made in our past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please identify yourself.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Onisa Hernandez with Drug Policy Alliance. I want to thank you for your efforts around this resolution and want to let you know that we support it. It's a great step. This resolution is a step in the right direction. We are in a statewide and nationwide criminal justice reform movement that has made its way into these chambers, which is really awesome, because many of our constituents support these efforts. And they support the efforts that divert their loved ones into services rather than incarceration. But today, I urge you not only to make this resolution and take this step, but in the future, to consider creating comprehensive, innovative reentry systems that will adequately support our community members and keep them from becoming homeless and preventing them from recidivating. So many people fall through the cracks right now with the current reentry system that we have, and it's not enough. So in the future, when the money does come in, let's make sure that we keep in the back of our mind that what is, what's going on right now is not enough, and we need to create more services. Thank you.
No more speakers. Let me defer to Mr. Harris Dawson, and then I'll call on you, Mr. Buscano.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Today, I am introducing a substitute resolution in lieu of Friday's original resolution and asking that we join city and community leaders to call on state lawmakers to implement the will of the people of California by fully funding Proposition forty-seven, a key public safety priority in this year's state budget. We are calling on our leaders in Sacramento to ensure local communities, especially here in L.A., have the resources they need to keep our communities safe and to ensure that they have the ability to meet our public safety needs. Right now, the state of California is saving millions and millions of dollars from not locking people up, from the reclassifications of different offenses, from felonies to misdemeanors. The promise to the voters was that those savings would be redirected back to local communities for programming to make people successful in their reentry and also prevent new people from joining the prison population. And so we're asking and frankly demanding that the state make good on that promise. There are savings, there's a bit of an argument about how much the savings are. We, we're falling on the side of thinking that there are more. We need those resources to come to our town to help us deal with the challenges we're confronting.
Mr. Buscano.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson, and those who joined us this morning. Bottom line is Prop forty-seven is under siege. It's under siege because of a promise that was made that cities and counties would receive money to implement robust services for lower-level drug and theft offenders in the form of substance abuse programs and alternative housing. In a time where this country is spending hundreds of millions of dollars, maybe billions of dollars, in incarceration, I'd like to see those billions of dollars be reinvested and redirected to alternative housing and substance abuse programs. And unfortunately, with Prop forty-seven, we have yet to see those dollars come to local governments. It's a shame. Our colleagues in the state government are debating on the price tag. We damn well know that there have been significant cost savings with both Prop forty-seven, AB 109, but yet we are, we're failing to see those dollars come to our local communities. Not only the reduction of some felonies to misdemeanors, we've seen the reclassification of drug offenses, but it also, the significant funding for alternative programs to help break the cycle of petty thefts and drug abuse. This is one of the reasons why I supported Prop forty-seven. In my days, working the streets as a police officer here, I've seen poverty at its worst. You, number of individuals have turned to a life of crime because of poverty. A number of individuals who have suffered from mental illness have turned to drug abuse. And yet, with this Prop forty-seven that's been approved by the voters of this state, they've lent a helping hand and a helping heart to those who need the most help. We hear in this horseshoe, one of our own, Mike Bonin, is a prime example of rehabilitation. Someone who turned to drugs and told himself he's going to get back on his feet. And that's one of our colleagues today. And we know that hundreds of thousands of individuals in our city and our state can do the same. So with that, I'm happy to partner with Marquise on this resolution. At the same time, we understand why people in this city are frustrated with Prop forty-seven. Because there have been that speculation that we've seen an increase in crime in our city due largely in part of Prop forty-seven. Well, studies after studies show that that's not the case. But yet, perception is reality. And this is why it's important to get those dollars to the local governments so we can help those who need the most help in our cities. Thank you.
Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander.
Thank you. I didn't vote for Prop forty-seven. I didn't support it then, I don't support it now. The fact is, the voters did. The most important element of it was rehabilitation, social programs, helping people. I just didn't believe that would ever happen. I hoped it would, because I do believe that that helps a lot. Giving people a second chance in life is so important. It's what we need to do. We need to make sure that we reduce our rate of recidivism, that people that are getting released from prison, or now in this case jail, don't go out to commit the same crime again. We need to make sure that we have mental health programs and social monitoring and protection programs for those very people that can't help themselves, that had never had that ability or that opportunity in life. That never perhaps had local intervention programs or after-school programs. Maybe they dropped out of school, they didn't have a second chance or a third chance. I do believe that those programs help. But the programs have to be funded. And that was my biggest concern. My biggest concern was putting the hook out there, baiting the hook, and then taking the bait away later. It's exactly what we're seeing today. It was sort of what happened with the social, with, with, exactly what happened, quite frankly, with, I believe, with the Safer City Initiative here in Los Angeles. It was supposed to be a partnership with both the county and other social program providers and law enforcement to go out there on Skid Row and many other places to make arrests. LAPD showed up, the city was there, but then there were no programs to service and help people. It failed miserably. I see that happening again now. Crime is a pendulum, and it's going up because the programs to backfill what was supposed to be promised under Prop forty-seven haven't occurred. We've seen what's happened with the legislative office and the analysts in Sacramento saying that this program should be generating about a hundred million dollars right now. The county of Los Angeles is getting about four million. That's insane. That's criminal. So the fact is, we've decriminalized the criminal justice system and all of these types of crimes. Dealing with it on the back end is the most important thing, and it's not being done for lack of funds. I absolutely support not only this motion to move forward to make sure we get our fair share of these dollars. We need these programs here, and we need them yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Root? Mr. Root?
I just want to rise in support of this motion from Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson and Joe Buscano. We definitely need more funding from the state. And with the projected surplus that the state has, I'm hoping that the governor would use some of that money to fund these programs. And I think there's a lot of legislators, legislators from this, from our area, like Senator Holly Mitchell, who's been fighting with the governor for years, asking for some of these budget surpluses to go back down to the communities. Having worked for an agency that had the largest AB 109 program, we were always out of slots. They were filled immediately. And we definitely need more support from the state for them to fund this unfunded mandate. So thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for bringing this forward.
Okay, let's prepare then to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And, Mr. President, the first vote is on a question whether to substitute.
Okay, so the first vote is on substitution. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now, we're going to actually vote on the issue as amended or substituted. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Harris Dawson. Fourth with on that, that has been approved. Okay, and Madam Clerk, we're going to continue item thirty-nine until Wednesday, until tomorrow. So that brings us to?
And, Mr. President, there's a request to reconsider items on item one, item one E, G, N, R, W, and F.
Okay, so we're going to reconsider these items and then continue them?
That's correct. To be continued to March twenty-ninth.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And, and these items have been continued until March twenty-ninth. That brings us, Mr. Buscano.
Item twenty?
Yes, sir, item twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I called this item specifically for an amendment. Now, the street name on the item before you is correctly stating South Peck in the council file and also in the resolution that was introduced. But in T. Committee, the T. Committee report incorrectly calls it the street that we are trying to move forward on the oversized vehicle ordinance. It's, in the T. Report, it identifies it as South Park, not South Peck. So we just wanted to make sure there's consistencies in all the reports. Okay? We good? Thank you.
Correct.
So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's recess this regular meeting, go into a special meeting. We call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscano, Sadio, Anglender, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Caress, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Fourteen members present and a quorum, Mr. President. And item forty-six on the special agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's recess this special, return to the regular. Or adjourn, my-
Well, before you adjourn, do you want to send this forthwith?
Fourthwith. Now, let's adjourn and return to the regular. And so that brings us where?
To general public comment.
Okay. Mr. Walsh? Ms. Peirman? Uh, Mr. Englander, yes?
Before we go to general public comment, if I could ask, item forty-three on an urgent forthwith, so I know we'll have to vote on that, but I'd ask for that.
Okay, so let's vote on urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, so, go right ahead, sir.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to Krikorian recall. This is already organized, it's well-funded. This is already organized, it's well-funded, we're sending him to go bye-bye. And anybody but Englander is a movement. We support Arun Ajarian, Mr. Huff, anybody but Englander who looked the other way while SoCal poisoned children. The white people didn't get involved, because they're white and they believe in corporations, till their little kitties started hemorrhaging from the nose. Then they went to the media after SoCal came here, two weeks later, and once the media